To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic. For which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright. See here, we have minutes, everybody have a chance to read the minutes?
Yes, I make a motion to approve.
A second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Alright. Mr. Jordan.
Um, so.
Oh, before, sorry. Um, I I met with person about parking.
Okay.
We can catch up after the meeting.
Okay.
So give you, I meant to call you too, but.
Okay.
So, alright, anyway, sorry to interrupt you.
So, me and Heather, we, I think we got the ordinances squared a little better, so they're entered into IDAX. So, now we can print them on. Still have to get Odyssey from me, or do we got that worked out to where?
Um, she said that you could just submit through whatever system that you have?
Yeah, so write it, and I think if I sync it, it goes directly to you.
Okay.
So I think that's.
Well, I have to see, it's still gonna have to see how it works with computers. Jordan and I have set a couple of dates in November and December for people that get a traffic ticket. Um, we're just gonna try to touch base and see how many we have before we set some more. I mean, there's no reason for having court every month if we're only writing, you know, a few tickets a month.
Uh huh.
Maybe do it every quarter or something, but I think we've got everything.
Yeah.
It's just gonna be the logistics, how, when he hits submit, do I get a copy of that in Odyssey? To know, or is he gonna have to call and say, hey, I want a ticket, here's my ticket, before we go to court, or? You know, and I'll have to get with Judge Hancock, just to make sure he knows we're gonna be on the docket. And does he want us to set him for trials, or does, I wanna look and see if we can do a diversion program as a town? Sort of like the county does, where they just pay a higher fee and I watch it for a year, and if they don't get more infractions, dismiss it, or whatever. Um, that's sort of low on my priority list, cause uh, that's quite undertaking to have to look at it. Uh, but other than that, I think it's just logistical of how we're gonna, Jordan and I are gonna communicate, but we've done a pretty good job so far, I think. Communicate and get stuff done.
Also, they have, um, the SIM cards that we can put into the tablets are cheaper than the Wi-Fi hotspots that we got now. So, instead of me having to worry about something else to charge.
Yeah.
I just have a SIM card put in it, and I have to worry about it. Here, that was the best way to go with that, and so, they also, what is it?
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, uh, they also were gonna, so the, the department phone was gonna get upgraded too. I don't.
Definitely.
They have to get approval from Justin though, cause he's, he should have sent an email.
Right, and I did.
So, but, other than that, that's pretty much all I got.
Awesome, appreciate it.
Was there any, did we issue citations for property cleanup? I feel like we had some issues last month. I didn't know if we formally did those, or we're waiting on addresses or something?
Yeah, so owners on that, that was the part that I would, me and Heather talked about on the written. So I wasn't sure if we're gonna enter them into the state, or if they were gonna be just handwritten state citations.
Because what happens is, if he puts it in Odyssey, it sends it as like an ordinance violation with a court name. But that's not what we want, because those ordinances are written that they have ten days, the, the ticket says you have ten day, or supposed to say, you have ten days to clean it up. If you don't clean it up within ten days, we, they have thirty days before we send somebody out to do it. And I talked with Jordan, I said, my, my thought has always been, I don't wanna send anybody onto private property without a court order. So usually what we ended up doing was suing as an ordinance violation, but it has to go a different system. It can't be like a traffic ticket where he puts in the speeding and it pops out the ticket. So, um, I, I mean, as far as citing them, I have a problem citing, I think Jordan just needed some direction, um, on this, the ordinance. And when we met last Thursday, we talked about those kind of things. So, it's gonna, he's gonna have to get into a groove of, I've issued them a ten day, have ten days I'm gonna follow up on the calendar. If they've not done anything by day forty, it is basically what the statute says, then we, we, he would tell me to file suit.
Okay, and so I'm just preparing for the property cleanup portion of the meeting.
Yeah.
Nobody's been cited as of, okay, got, cool, thank you.
And I think we're gonna have issues too, um, you know, like that one property. And maybe we can talk about later in property cleanup, but there's a couple of properties where the owners don't live here. And Jordan can't obviously go out of, I mean, he could, he could go in Indiana, I'm sure, but I, we wouldn't wanna send him outside of the town limits. Um, I've tried to serve those, um, via certified mail. And I know that one property we've discussed this last time, I've not had any luck getting anybody signed for certified mail. So it's sort of hard, especially when they're empty lots and Jordan doesn't have a door, cause usually I would tell Justin, just stick it on the door. Tape it on the door. Um, but, you know, empty lots, you don't have a door sticking. So those might be problem areas, that we have to get creative of our hire a private process service server to take a ticket out there or something.
Okay.
Anything else? Awesome. Uh, financials?
Do the budget next, or?
Or just do down in old business, or?
Alright.
Um. Alright, anything else for financials? Alright, uh, committee reports, so mainstream quest and agreement, that kinda blends mine and Heather's together a little bit, along with everyone. Um, Heather, you go ahead.
Well, I made the, I don't wanna get too deep into the threat of litigation outside of an executive session, but there was a threat of litigation. There is a statute that I've sort of passed on to you guys, that, you know, argued a little bit with the attorney about reasonable versus unreasonable. When they've sort of destroyed, um, three years ago, property of ours, uh, rejected offer that they had just put in some over here, and it was fine. But, you know, in the end, it, it comes down to, do we wanna hire a utility attorney and defend the I U R C complaint or not? Um, she sent me, what I sent you guys, she sent me very late Friday night. Uh, Greg, you sent me back, well, things you wanted to change, I just changed them. Um, and if you guys wanna vote on it tonight, I would suggest that, so that it's not lingering out there and we don't take the chance. I mean, I sorta, um, when I talked to her, I was sorta like, well, you know, they came in and said they wanna be good partners, but this really isn't a good partner or any threat to sue somebody. Um, you know, I said, we off, um, Parkland Heights, we offered them other areas, and she, they really wanted a blanket author, a blanket agreement that they could just, these are the terms, they can go in anywhere in Greenville, and I was like, I don't think I can get my clients to agree to that. We gotta, we gotta have them have, um, and start doing it. So I, I mean, I think our options are, you know, she didn't make that many changes to what I put in there. Some of those, the, the stuff that you wanna change back, uh, those were things that they put in. So I mean, I, I tried to make it as tight as I could to sort of protect. Um, I think that it's a shame, just my personal opinion, again, not a legal opinion, I think it's sort of a shame that you guys are being forced in that situation of, spend a lot of money on a utility attorney to defend our reasonableness claim. Um, or sign an agreement that people in Heritage Springs definitely do not want.
Yeah, do you, and I know you talked to other attorneys, I mean, do you think that by us denying it, that we are against that, um, the I U R C?
I think that they would file the complaint and the I U R C would likely make us give them reasonable access to the right of ways. Um, I don't think that many attorneys have been in this situation, the town attorneys, municipal attorneys, because they, they have the road cuts, they have the ordinances, they have, you know, that, I mean, they, they don't really, I don't, I don't know one that's limited access, and I don't, but I don't know one that's had the same problems that we have. Um, I mean, we obviously had some pretty severe problems with mainstream. I mean, but that was three years ago, of course, I, I get it. I mean, I went back and forth with their attorney about reasonable versus not reasonable. They are a public utility, so there is a statute that says we have to give them reasonable.
Yeah.
It'd be my opinion, um, since they sent us the attorney letter, I have some information that I'd like to discuss with the rest of the town council.
Yeah.
But I don't wanna do it in a public meeting. I think we should do it in an executive session, um, and I'd like to do that before the next town council meeting.
That's fine, I mean, I reiterate what Heather said, like, I don't wanna spend our town money on another, you know, on a dedicated attorney. I'm sure it's gonna be expensive, but I also don't want, you know, and I, I also don't want to authorize something that the majority, I'll say that, the majority of the area of its being serviced, that I want. And kinda what I've been, you know, emailing you Heather was, you know, what, what happens if they're, you know, they're boring through disturbing, disturbing the ground? A week, a month, a year, in whatever, later you start, you get some sort of water leak of some sort. We know that if it's on the house side of it, that's the residence responsibility to fix, right? I mean, so.
I understand the litigation aspects you wanna talk about, and I think that's fine for an executive session. The statute does say thirty days, and we're well past the thirty days of giving them reasonable access. So I think that if you don't sign the agreement allowing them access tonight, that we can probably expect an I U R C complaint by the end of the week. Just my feeling from talking to their attorney.
Alright, so, I mean, it's a complaint.
You, you'll have to get like a dedicated, like a utility. I mean, I'm fine with water and sewer for the most part, um, but you know, I don't deal with utilities all the time. You would probably wanna hire a Bozeller, or you know, somebody, and their rates are not a hundred and fifty dollars an hour to take that.
Yeah.
But that's my fear, because the statute does say that it, they have the right after thirty days of not being allowed reasonable access. And we're well past that, because they've come a couple times.
Be fair, we've allowed them access to Parkland Heights. They've refused it, right? Is everybody understanding?
We also didn't allow, we, we did, we allowed them, we didn't object anything at the front of the neighborhood either. You know, the video is to go ahead and re begin.
But they've asked for Heritage Springs, and their, their contention is, is that we don't, were unreasonably withholding access to Heritage Springs.
They did downtown Greenville without any approval, they just did it.
But I think that's.
They seem to me, they seem to me the last meeting, they felt that the last agreement.
What's actually?
Holding a bond, can you make them hold a bond?
They're not in the statute, they had, they have the right to reasonable access. But those are a public, technically a public utility.
I mean, if we don't pass it, if we don't pass it, sign it tonight, can we, uh, instead of waiting on the complaint to come, can you talk to their attorney and say, hey, listen, the council, we've had members out, in and out, right? At different times. Can we at least have our time to meet together, the, under executive session, so we can discuss all the questions that we each have?
I mean, they brought it to the attorney level, so the executive session's their, their fault. Like, we have to request this now. Can't talk about what I have on them publicly? I'm gonna keep that private.
And I'm happy to do that, my feeling is though, that.
They're gonna do it anyways?
They're gonna.
They're gonna follow the point, I mean.
Cause it's already been two months.
Yeah.
Sure.
I mean, like, that's a very good partnership.
No, and I, I mean, my position is, they came in here and asked for permission to do it in Heritage Springs, and we said no. And now they're saying, from the date of the attorney letter, is my opinion when it starts, so whenever that was, that's when they're claiming they have the right.
Well, and that was like thirty days.
Well.
And it was a while.
When she talked to them.
And the thing is too, is that we didn't just deny them Heritage Springs because we don't want their service, we denied it because we just paved the road there.
Well, and the fact that.
Infrastructure.
The majority, the infrastructure, the majority of the fucking people don't want it, the infrastructure, I mean.
Yeah.
I. Did they agree to the, the changes?
No, wait, she's literally sent it to me Friday evening, um, and I sent it straight to you as soon as I got it. So, and then you got me the changes last night on Sunday. I mean, so business hours, no, I've not even had twenty-four business hours to look at it, cause today's holiday. So, so I mean, I don't mind, you know, emailing her back and saying, look, you know, if we take your letter as a date of in writing, um, we have thirty days where you can even file the complaint, my client wants to have an executive session, I'm fine doing that. I just, I just wanna put on the record, I don't know that that's going to stop them.
Okay.
Just from the tone and the demeanor, uh, but I would set an executive session as soon as you could, um, to discuss potential lit, or threat of litigation issues.
So, uh, how about this, so we can, we can set an executive session, and we'll, before meeting's over, we'll put that down. I will contact, I can contact the, one of the guys that came up here, right? And I, I don't, well, I guess I don't know if I should do that now, that, that attorneys are involved, that typically snakes out the whole conversation back and forth.
Well, I think that.
But I could.
To me, tomorrow morning, I would email Nikki and say, here are the changes that my client wants, I made those. Um, we're going to meet, Nick, since you got this to me late Friday, we haven't had an opportunity to notice and, and do an executive session, here's when that's set for. Um, and we'll, you know, have a special meeting after executive session to either vote on it or not.
Can you do that later this week, or?
You have to have forty-eight hours to publish the.
I don't know, it, it'll have, I, I think it's gonna have to be next week. Before we can be.
Yeah, I think the contract has a mapping, right?
Yeah.
So I think the map's gonna be part of the executive session, like, I don't wanna give them, the language is fine, but the map itself is, that's still debatable.
Well.
Well, and I can also ask Nikki and say, well, look, the changes they want is they want to do Parkland Heights, not Heritage Springs. I can bring up some of the other issues.
Yeah.
Um, and say, you know, would you be willing to amend and change Exhibit A to Parkland Heights, which is the neighborhood next? What really does probably happen, might have a need.
But Parkland Heights and, Parkland Heights and the, the villas of, you can give written approval for it, you know?
Yeah.
I mean, so, and then, and quite honestly, that's what we said, we said in the public meeting, to their, to their folks. And, I mean, we need, we need time to finish reviewing, I added some language for that agreement. So I, but I didn't do that till, you know.
Above ground utilities and some of this, yeah.
Yeah, so, I mean.
Or no above ground.
Yeah, 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 so. Alright, and I mean that, I appreciate your advice, you know, your opinion, um, Heather, but, you know, it's.
No, that's fine, I just, I just.
You all.
I'm fine with doing that, I just don't want it to come back later and sue and me say.
Are you okay with that?
And you say, why?
Yeah, are you okay with that?
Yes.
Alright.
Are, are you thinking next Monday, is that?
Uh, I mean, if that works.
I think I have.
I was just gonna say, does it work for you guys?
I have eleven, I have a town council meeting in another camp, municipality.
Um, okay, so.
Probably need you here.
They don't, they don't need you there, we need you.
I can do Tuesday, probably Wednesday, I'll do Thursday. Tuesday or Thursday or best.
Would Tuesday, Tuesday work?
Mm-hmm.
The twenty-first?
I can probably make anything, yeah.
Alright, Skip, you, you wanna come on Tuesday the twenty-first?
Whatever you'd like. I'm not traveling again, or shouldn't be traveling again for the remainder of the year.
Okay.
Can you do it earlier, like at six?
Earlier the better.
How it works better.
Who's gonna do the notice with the, the, um, statutory site on it? I can, I mean, I can do it if you want me to, okay? I'll just have to email myself, I'll get it to you, it's gotta be posted four hours before, so I'll email it to you and Crystal.
Email it to me and I'll put it on the website. Alright, Tuesday the twenty-first at six?
Yep. Alright, perfect, I'm good. Cool. Um, alright, moving forward here, um, emergency services.
Uh, so, do you wanna talk about that, that you showed me?
Uh, yes, I got a triple G's on rifle. And they have a rifle that they quoted me for the short-brailed rifle for, uh, well, they are pistol for seven fifty. Doesn't have anything on it, but I'm not a gun nut, this is kinda like some of the attachments and stuff that come on it, if you guys wanna look at it. Or like, my buddy.
He started to me.
Yeah, talked to me about it, and then there's some of the stuff, he's like, this is what we've been putting on our rifles and stuff, but, again, I don't know. I just qualify every year, I don't know a whole lot about.
So assume that has an arm brace, like a.
Yes.
The brace on it.
Well, that, that's one that paper of getting that brace.
Yes. So. I'm not a big fan of the O-lights, but, I mean, it's fine.
Greg knows a lot about them.
That's why.
Yeah, I mean, I, they're, they've, they've gotten a lot better, that O-light, I'm just not a huge fan of them. Stream lights, but, uh, it's, it's fine, after the first of the year though, you can do, um, after January first, they changed the tax stamp. These, you still have to, and I don't know how it is for law enforcement, but, uh, starting January one, you don't have to pay your two hundred dollar tax stamp anymore for, uh, that's S bars or, uh, not for, I don't know about for this, for S bars and suppressors and other weapons, but. Uh, if you, I'm just saying, so if you didn't wanna have, you could replace that depending on what the laws are. The, the, we can get a nicer, uh, and a nicer plate, so I guarantee that if you wanna come over, you can try a couple of them out.
Yeah.
Um, I mean, I think it's fine, I think it's fine, um, so, and the other, uh, other agencies are doing comparable, like the Romeo and stuff?
Uh, yes, on the, on that brand of a young though, I'm, I'm not sure.
Oh, what brand is it?
Uh, the Shark Coast, it's a brand that Triple G's recommended. Um, it's kind of a newer brand, they said they have great reviews, and that's what they recommend, you know?
While he's looking at.
I shouldn't have been the one to get the question.
While he's looking at a, uh, I wanted to ask you about, if you noticed that, um, I think it's J-Town Police Car that's sitting, it's like a direct.
It's Jeffersonville.
Jeffersonville?
Jefferson Town.
I thought Jeffersonville.
Jeffersonville.
It's at the Dollar General, like, it's always on a car parking spot. And the other day, it looked like it was there for like a week before.
It was there for.
And then, just as I was talking about it, the next day it was gone, and then it was back there that night in the same spot.
I wonder if it's somebody that, like, has, that works, um. Didn't they have like night shift?
Yeah.
They do, I know they live in their apartments.
I don't know.
They probably get one parking spot.
Yeah.
Interesting.
I don't know if they like passed it by Dollar General before they're there, or what, but.
Right. Yeah, I just, mainly I thought it was broke down, and I didn't want it to just sit there.
Well, you think.
Dollar General gonna be brave enough to take a police car and impound, I don't think so.
We might as well ask and just.
I was wrong.
But, um, you could get thirty-five dollars for any of these, because you would pound in a town.
I'm gonna get my, I'm kinda just looking a little bit, um. I mean, I've never, I've never heard of that one, which doesn't necessarily mean anything, it's probably like a lot of the other stuff. Probably a new one kind of on the market, that's, I mean, they just kinda say it's one of the same, like generic type stuff. Um. I don't know what kind of warranty they've had either.
Done.
Yeah, definitely look all that up, but.
Um.
I can go up there one day, when you guys are busier sometime, we can talk about. And then.
It has a five-year warranty, that's not it. What's the purpose of the rifle?
Uh, just, uh, my basic patrol rifle.
It's a.
Only if the bulk carrier and everything's solid, you know?
It's a short-barre rifle too, it's a, uh, it's probably what, a ten and a half, twelve and a half?
Uh, yeah, I think, uh, we were talking about a twelve and a half.
I think we should all go to the SHOT Show in January.
I think that would be a great idea, I still wanna go really bad. Um, I think we should hold off on it, on that one, I would, I know we'd feel a little more comfortable getting like, um.
Something that's proven?
Yeah, I mean, and I'm fine with like a Ruger or Smith and Wesson, I mean, like, like, you know, or, Springfield's a little bit more, but, I don't know. I mean, I've built all of mine, I've never bought one, one, I mean, I'd probably buy a, uh, Palo del State Armory one. Well, you know, before I go with one that I'd never heard of before.
New Saint, this guy released?
I know. Um, so, I, I would say let's hold off another month, and, I mean, I'm happy to go up there too.
Okay.
Sometime, um, I think just, we probably can, uh, we could, we're probably gonna have to spend a little bit more, but, I, I don't know too many agencies that are probably running, like, not named brand, we you think they?
I mean, I think there's plenty of options to choose from in the same price range, or still under a thousand dollars at least, that, like, you know, are proven systems that can get the job done.
Yeah, and I mean, it may be that, okay. I'll have to look and see what, I know the Saint comes, I know the Saint comes in a twelve and a half, but we're also gonna spend probably, you know, three, four hundred dollars more on it, so I don't know about that, but, um, I guarantee, I would think that the M and P or the Ruger can come in the same, similar price range with.
Yeah, to me, it depends on what you're using it for, right? If we're using it for like SWAT tactics and stuff, I mean, there's a thousand SWAT teams that have got guns, why don't we just see what there is? I'm sure it's not this, that we've never heard of.
I'm with you.
That's mine.
Yeah, I don't care if they more, I just. I mean, it's, has anybody?
Go ahead, Skip.
Have, has anybody contacted Kiesler, I mean, they are the largest police supplier of firearms in the country, and they're writing Jeff.
Probably not yet, so we probably just a, an initial look, and that's probably, we probably wanna just take the Kiesler to see what.
He originally started here in town, so he does have a.
Yeah.
I mean, I've, I've, I've got the whole staffs, owners, everybody's cell phone, so I mean, we can contact them anytime you want.
Yeah, I think it would be good, I know somebody that works there too, um, I think it'd be good just to go down there and ask them like, hey, I'm, if we're gonna twelve, four point one, and, you know, outfit. It's gonna be more expensive, but you're probably not gonna, if you wanna light, you're probably not gonna get O-lite, right? You're probably gonna get Fire, you know, Streamlight.
I don't mind Surefire, I think they're great lights.
Yeah, I think maybe one of those, um, and I think everything else is fine, I just, I don't know the law for law enforcement. If you all are bound by the same brace, I mean, I would think that you would have to have the brace. And, um, I mean, so, I would rather have some, an actual solid Sonic on, you know, so, that's my, that's my, you know?
For that matter, I agree, the Kiesler's offer, the, you know, Dan, uh, oh crap, who's the, uh, anyhow, Kiesler's offer to help us out any way, any way they can, because they all live in Greenville. President lives in Greenville, the vice president lives in Greenville, the.
So Skip, since you have kinda that relationship with them, you mind maybe making that, that intro call and saying, maybe, hey, Jordan, gonna come up one day, and this is what we're looking for, you know, like, hey, he's looking for, you know, a rifle for the department, and then go up there and talk to him, and so, I think I'd feel, and then we can still go up to Triple G, be fine with that, and say like,
Yeah, and, and I, and I, and I, sorry, and Jordan, I'll just copy you on the text. Uh, and then, uh, yeah, cause you'll never get past the front gate without an invite.
Yeah, 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 no, yeah, that'd be great, I appreciate it, so, and like.
Either tomorrow.
I think Saint Romeos are fine, I, yeah, I know that there's police forces that are using the, their Romeos too, but, I don't know. I'm sure.
And they can give you all, all the ins and outs of what everybody else is using, laws, what's best, everything, because that's all they do is, well, they're now into ninety percent of their business is in, is into warfare, uh, special ops, all that stuff, but they still are the largest police supplier, but so they have a vast knowledge of that, that's where they got their, their start.
Yeah, no, that sounds good, so fair enough.
I mean, we don't need, yeah, we're not talking anything crazy, a five-five-six rifle.
We don't need, we don't need hydration, IR on it, yeah, that's, that's, uh, it's something, I'm basing, but, it's, uh, they in it now.
I like my new Romeo.
I could donate one, donate one of mine, I mean, like, so.
You could.
Yeah, alright, um, I treat the roads.
Oh boy, buckle up everyone.
Alright.
Took it literally, didn't we?
Alright.
Um, alright, so CCMG update, the deadline is October thirty-first. Uh, actually, you know what, since he just stepped out, let me keep going on other stuff. Speed humps and striping, got the thermoplastic paint, uh, fifty-five hundred dollars for the speed humps, painting the front of the subdivision, putting.
Painting the front of the subdivision, putting thermoplastic paint stripes on the speed humps, which should last longer. And be more reflective.
Yeah, fifty five hundred dollars is a lot of money for paint.
Oh no, I'm sorry, uh yeah, so it's uh one speed home. Uh it's, it's painting the front of the subdivision, and it's the thermoplastic paint on four speed humps.
Yeah, I love that, not on five? Don't we have five right currently?
I think we have three in the subdivision and one in Wind Dance, right?
Two, two in Wind Dance.
And two. Two in Wind Dance, you're right, okay.
And then you're talking about putting another one in, so that would be six total that we would need thermal paint on.
We're, we're replacing.
Oh, that's right, that's right.
Yeah, yeah, it got taken out with the road, road construction. Um so anyway, that's the update on that, I've been in coordination with Rusty at uh CNR, um I don't have a timeline. I still owe him the address on the placement of the, the speed hump. Uh pothole work, I got with Jordan, we completed the pothole on Button Town, which was. Problem forever, that should be fixed and nice, and then there was another one on Harrison, it was getting pretty big, he filled that in, so that's all done. Coming up, uh we are required to put in our pavement asset management plan once every two years. So that's not due this round, that's due next year, so I think the filing for that is like December first, some weird metric. But it's due for next year, um that has a new requirement by NDOT. So we now have to have the person that certifies all the roads, they have to be Pazer certified. But they implemented a QC process where a second person that's Pazer certified has to sign off on that work. We're lucky because our engineers, Adam is also Pazer certified on top of Rachel being Pazer certified. Pazer does the work, I'm sorry, Rachel does the Pazer work, ratings, and Adam will certify those and do the QC process, so right now. We're good with that, we should be able to file in December, we're gonna work together and coordinate all those numbers and make sure they're all good, and then file them. Moving back on the CCMG. Filing deadline on that is October thirty first, I met with him this morning. We originally wanted to do sidewalks down Clark Street, so there's this ineligible expense on that, it's three hundred and twenty four thousand dollars. Yeah, and so, and I was like, is that like curving and sidewalks on both sides of the road? What are we looking at for that? And that was just curvings on the north side, the side that we're on, and sidewalks on this side. So just one side, and that's.
That's insane.
Uh would be from Pekin to Voiles, so that was just the ineligible expense amount, that's not even our local match. For the paving and, and all that, so I, I, I kinda dialed it back and, and we started doing different things. So if we pave our small section of Button Town, the remainder of Parkland Heights, all of it. And then we pave from Pekin to Voiles, our local match for that, right now, is estimated at sixty one thousand five hundred dollars. We could do all of that for sixty one five, that would be our twenty percent match, the CCMG would cover the eighty percent, which is a lot larger number. Um that's what I suggested. And then Adam and, and Rachel and, and I were talking about the, the roads, I forget what it's called, it's like safe. Safe Schools Act, there's a grant that's available that we can explore. The filing for that is actually also December, um so we're looking at like. What is the requirement of this grant and potentially throwing in something inside that? And seeing if they'll pay for it, because we, we still have a really nice story with Councilman Johnson and what happened to him. And trying to honor him and create a safer environment for our citizens.
And we do know that we have some folks that, you know, walk their kids to school and whatnot, so I don't, I don't know how much that grant would be, but would that grant be enough to do? Sidewalk.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know, even a section, like we talked about, we, we explored doing this section, and we explored doing that section. And then we explored doing different blocks, and it was just so expensive with the ineligible expenses. It's kind of nonsense, like, so the thought was just pave as much as you can, right? It's still within our normalized budget that we're looking at for paving amount for a CCMG grant. And by next year, if you just paved Harrison Street, you'll essentially have paved over ninety percent of the roads in this town. Since we've been on the council, it is wild. That's my change, that's what I was gonna bring to the board.
No, I think it's a great idea.
So then, I need approval just to move forward with the idea of a sixty one thousand five hundred dollar match for CCMG.
I hear a motion on the table.
Uh and that, that is it for Streets and Route.
Snow removal.
Okay, so Andy, thank for, thank you for all your help, Greg and I have been trying to get. Uh bids and we did get lambs, which is, Greg, did you get what I texted you?
Yeah, I did.
Yeah, did you get, did you get the email?
I got two.
I didn't get the email, I only got the uh, the text message, so.
Andy, did you get it?
I did not.
So there must be something up with your email address and we may be filtering out. Some of those like Gmail type stuff from our email. Why? Cause that would've been Gmail to Gmail.
I just sent it to your Gmail.
So.
Yeah, I got it on my Gmail account.
Basically, it's forty five hundred dollars per event, per plow, or as they call it, per pitch. Uh or per push rather. And, and then if we want salting on top of that, hold on, let me read his, bring this up um. Yeah, so it's forty five hundred dollars per push, and if we want salting and also, then it's forty five hundred dollars per salting, per event. So it could be as much as twenty seven thousand dollars if we had three snowfalls in one year.
So my question though, per event though, so if we have one snow, right? And they come out and they're plowing, 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 right? Salt and salting, that's one event in my head versus like you. Go out and drop your blade, you scoop one time and then you leave, is that considered an event?
Yes, so if they pre-salt, it's, it's four hundred, four hundred, uh forty five hundred dollars, if they salt after. They plow, that's another forty five hundred dollars, it's forty five hundred dollars every time they make a run. Whether they're pushing snow or whether they're salting.
I mean, in my opinion, after reviewing what I'm hearing, uh Jordan still has the lowest bid.
Uh my, my vote is to go back to Jordan, I mean, if he does one trick with truck and outfits one truck. Uh let me pull up his text, um.
Yeah, I mean, that's what it was.
I mean, rather than the way he bid that out last time, can he just redo his bid to include the price?
He's not gonna redo his bid.
Not, not to change the price.
But to include all the, the truck stuff that he wanted, you know what I'm saying, like instead of putting that separate.
Well, here's, here's what he, here's what his, his, his bid is, um. He's gonna implement a thirty five hundred dollar per truck winner uh for the truck. So if he just designated one truck for us, this is my suggestion, we have one designated truck. Uh which he would bill out over six months. And then he's a hundred and fifty dollars an hour for a skid, hundred and twenty dollars an hour for salting. Um and uh, a hundred and twenty dollars an hour for plowing, so. If we have one designated truck, now let's say that we do have something like we had last year. I am sure, and this is just, just my gut, that he's gonna outfit his other truck. Anyhow, because he thinks he's gonna get parking lots and other things to do. If we were in a pinch and we said, hey, we need your second truck, I don't think we're gonna have to pay that outfitting charge. This is my thought.
And you said thirty five hundred per truck, it, but build out over six months, how, how does that work? What, what do you mean by that?
For the next six months.
That's it, so it's thirty five hundred total skip?
To, to have a solely designated outfitted truck, so it's exclusive to in, in Greenville and he won't use it for anything else, thirty five hundred dollars. Starting to sound pretty good.
That sounds pretty good, I thought it was more, I thought we were at like ten thousand dollars or something.
Well, it was seven thousand dollars.
For both, right.
Yeah, I'm gonna text this all to you, so you have it.
I, actually, I know why, my, your emails are going to the junk folder, so, uh. Yeah, I mean, I, I don't know that we really need them, we don't have it. Anything official, I don't know if we need to have vote on having Jordan do it, or if we just.
Well, we need to vote on the thirty five hundred dollar setup fee. We need to pass that.
The question is, the debatable question is, do you want one or two trucks? You just want one?
I think he should be able to handle one.
I do, I agree.
One truck and then one truck outfitted, and then we know the cost for a first skid steer, right?
Well, we're not gonna have to pay to outfit the truck next year too, right? Cause we're paying for that upfront.
That's what you're talking about. It's season. So it goes from now until March.
I thought we were paying for him to get the equipment on.
He has the equipment, we're paying them to put the equipment on and to have it one dedicated truck.
He's gonna take it all back off in the spring.
To, to be fair, he's also storing salt for us right now at no cost.
Plus, plus, the other benefit is, is that that truck is designated to us first and foremost. In other words, he doesn't touch anybody else's property, he does the town exclusively with that truck.
I guess on him if he decides he, if there's so much snow that falls that he needs another vehicle, I mean, that's kind of his call to make, you know?
They had, he, he was running two trucks though last year.
It, it, uh he had some, one of the trucks was down for a long time.
But I think that, I think the issue was, you know better than I do, but I think he had one truck that went down, he got behind. So he had to use two, two trucks to try to get caught up, and then everything was packed down so much. That's when they had to bring in like all of the skid steers to try to do it, so.
I would like to make, I would like to make a motion that we pay Jordan thirty five, or thirty five hundred dollars to outfit one truck for the season. Uh and then move forward with his hourly rate, but just initially that thirty five hundred dollars.
I'll second that, all in favor, say aye.
I'd like to move forward with another motion, that if Jordan's going to accept our approved amount and bid and all this. We go ahead and have him acquire three pallets of salt, which will save us a ton of money if we don't wait till later. If he's got the room for it, I'd approve up to three pallets of salt right now, it'd probably be, I, I'll say the high end right now this time here. Five fifty a pallet, so we're looking at sixteen fifty, it's probably gonna be less though if he gets it right now.
Consider the emotion amended.
Yes, so I, I mean, I'll second that. So all in favor, say aye.
And I think we should have some left, Skip, uh I'm not sure how much though, okay.
Jordan asked me what we wanted to do with it, but now that we're going to use him then.
Package him back in the corner.
Right, so alright.
And I'm so happy about this because. Jordan was really looking forward to doing our snow removal, and he's, you know, been a little disgruntled, and we're using him so much, it'd be nice to use him for everything.
I disagree, I'd rather keep it here in Greenville, so.
What else, what else do we have left on the agenda? Cause I got a staff waiting for me to take them to dinner.
You got anything for property cleanup, Skip?
I do not.
Alright, I do, you can go ahead, thanks Skip.
Unless you wanna hear my property cleanup.
I do.
Have a good night, Skip.
Okay, I got um, I got a, a complaint on nine four two five, highway one fifty. That's the one that the car drove over Button Town Road, fell into the house and it's had a hole in it. Somebody complained on that, that is owned by Saber Investments out of a PO box in Carbondale, Illinois. And as we know with PO boxes, you can't certify mail them, I took the liberty of looking them. Uh because there's nobody to physically sign a PO box.
I get notices in my PO box all the time to come up to the desk and sign for a piece of mail.
Really?
Yeah.
Okay.
I've been, I've been.
So anyway, I do have the physical address, if you'd like to send it to their.
What, what is the complaint though? Well, I know, but under what section of the.
Well, there's trash everywhere. And there's a hole in the sign.
Grass hasn't been mowed in two, three months.
Okay, my suggestion would be that Jordan write up the citation, give me a copy of it, I'll mail it out and say, since there's no. No one there to serve it on, I think that we should probably put a copy on the door. Um and then I can mail a copy with a letter that says this has been served on the door and here you go, but yeah.
Maybe we should write an ordinance that says you can't have a big gaping crashed hole in your house.
Well, that, we do, it's, it's an unsafe though, we would need, we don't have. We don't have housing anymore to go out and say, oh yeah, this needs to be, yeah, this is structural safe or anything like that.
So that's my que, like, would the first step here be ask the health department to go out and see if there's rodents living in the structure?
You could.
Was this a rental property before?
No.
Health department can't go in without somebody being there because they don't have access, they can't just break into a house.
But they could crawl through the hole.
You can't just walk in, you gotta have some.
No, I get that, but they also have a lot more fast story. But I get, what we would usually do in this situation is that, since there is a physical address there, we would have Jordan write the citation. Uh we would have him put the notice on the door, since we know that it's an investment company, usually I just as a backup. Send a letter and say this has been served on the property here, we know you're the owner of record, here it is. So if you wanna send me the IG, G I, G I S uh information, I'll, I'll do that.
I'll send it to you, and then the other one was ninety nine oh seven, highway one fifty, so they're coming back up again.
Who is that?
Donovan and Diana Perkins, right by the bank, um so we've got a complaint on them. And I, I, I thought we had talked about them at the last meeting, but. Okay, so they've got a gigantic hole in their house of broken down trucks sitting in their front yard and.
It's not in the front yard anymore, he moved it around back.
All of it needs to start with the marshal, really.
Say that again, Skip?
They actually had a dumpster out in their front yard last week before I took off here uh out of state. Which I was, I was impressed, I thought maybe they were gonna throw away everything that's on their porch, I was hoping.
No, no, I think they took stuff from, from inside the house. I, I didn't see anything move off the front yard.
Well, well, I mean, we could take that as a uh, a sign of improvement and just, let's table this one and bring it back next month, how's that?
Yeah, cause I, I was, I had high hopes, but like I said, I haven't been back to see.
Okay, I didn't know that, I didn't know that, so thank you for sharing.
I have another property.
Uh there's one here that we got an email on about uh ninety seven sixty seven, highway one fifty. So that one got a complaint for. Uh what was that email on? Second.
Oh, it's on that, it's on the agenda.
Yeah, um. Yeah, she sent that, I'm trying to.
If it's the one right across from me there, they cleaned it all up about a week.
Yeah, it was uh, it's the uh taco truck. Complaints there about tall grass. Complaints, complaints there about tall grass and buckets of water sitting out with mosquitoes flying everywhere. I don't know that we have a.
That needs to go to the health.
That def- definitely needs to go.
Creepy because I still have some questions about how is it that they can't run the business out of there because they have no sewer? They have no septic, no sewer, no way to put it in, but yet they're able to go in and pee and poop in buckets inside and then go out and make the food in the food truck. I will never eat there, but I I think that.
I think they're using a porta potty.
They don't have a porta potty out in the public anywhere.
They did.
Yeah, I've never seen one.
Okay.
I will never eat.
Uh, uh, another potential issue here is that property there on West Second Street at. Clark Street here. They've had fifty bags of garbage sat in front of it for over a month. They moved out. The person went in, cleaned out the stuff and just left in the front yard.
Right down here?
Yeah, a block away. Fifty bags of garbage here. Old couch in the mess. I mean, it's, you know.
For the, for the, for the taco truck, uh, Crystal did advise the person complaining called the health department on it.
Oh, then you really won't have to worry about it.
Right.
Right, on that note.
Thank you, Skip.
Nope.
Yep. All right, we need circle back around to emergency services, so we talked about uh, last month about hiring full-time marshal. So we put that, mentioned, brought that up and so that we were bringing it back up this month.
You're good, man. Thank you.
Good night, guys.
Good night.
Yeah, did you? So, um. Hiring full-time marshal.
Oh, I think, I thought we were done with that. Are we still?
No, we hadn't talked, we we didn't talk about that piece. We just did the overall emergency services, so.
Uh, well, he said you guys talked about it last month, but we're.
I brought it up last month and that we were gonna. Yeah, vote to vote on it this month. I mean, I think one of the questions that we do, and not that it has to necessarily be the holdup, but um. Do we have the S O P?
I have the S O P. Uh, I did talk to Jordan earlier this week, um, and I was supposed to already get it out to him. I have one. Small piece in there that I still need to amend before I send it to him. Um, but it's not really holding up. Asking whether or not we want to have a full-time marshal or anything, so.
There are S O P in place.
Yeah, it's already in place. This is just the updated version.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
I, I mean, in my opinion, just bring the ordinance when we do the employees. Next, next month.
Yeah, yeah, we need to.
Next, what I mean the S O P, but I mean the.
The S O P's already been voted on. That was like last, last year or something.
Yep, didn't you already budget for this year to have a full-time? And so.
And at last meeting.
Was that the special last meeting that we wanted?
We wanted it to take effect on October sixteenth.
Yeah, because that was the pay.
Yeah.
But it hadn't been voted on.
Cause we.
That's just what the recommendation was.
We wanted to bring it to the town. We wanna bring it to one meeting and socialize it with the public. And that, you know, it's a big change, so we didn't wanna just drop it.
Yeah.
You know, and so talked about it one time. And so we'd bring it to the September meeting first and then we would have it October meeting to. Approve it.
I mean, do we have an ordinance?
Or?
Don't we need a salary ordinance?
We've we've already, you've already budgeted and appropriated this year for that.
But you don't have.
Did you not put it in the salary order as well?
Salary ordinance was for the part-time. We've never passed the full-time one.
Yeah, it would be, it's so individual.
But you can still hire even.
I mean, I mean, we do the salary. We could do it all right now.
Yeah.
I I was just gonna say, I mean, I think we can do this. You can approve it and say it starts now and then. Write the ordinance for next month's meeting when we do everyone else's.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's.
And. We we set the salary at sixty-five thousand per year. So you would take that and divide that by twelve and you get five thousand whatever. Would be a monthly salary and then divide that in half because he gets two checks a month. So a full-time would be about twenty-five hundred dollars every two weeks.
So. The salary, so based off of a yearly salary, so.
Yes.
So it would be. Right, that would. I mean, that's just where sixty-five thousand dollars annually.
Right.
It gets set in this, yeah.
So we need, do we need to do that? We need to do the ordinance before.
No, you can hire him full-time.
But before uh.
For next year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, absolutely.
Which we, we got that coming up anyways, right?
Yeah.
Next month, we need to do everybody's, you know.
Including marshal.
Set, yep, so the marshals. And then we also need to do.
Probably have an executive, right?
Well.
We usually.
Yeah, we talked about it. We can leverage the executive that we're gonna have next week. So.
So you want me to add that?
That's a good point.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think.
Start knocking it out.
I don't think you can, I have to look at the executive. I think we've had a suspicion before. You can't really discuss. Salary ordinance.
Well, but we can talk about performance.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
So, all right, so. Correct me if I'm wrong here. We can make a motion to hire. For a full-time marshal out of Greenville. And um, right, and then at the existing salary of sixty-five thousand dollar or. At a rate of sixty-five thousand per year. And then we can make a motion for that and then next month we can make a motion for the twenty twenty-six budget.
That sounds correct.
Yeah.
Not technically, but I mean, we don't have a, do we? I mean, we, I know we appropriated it, Jack, because we don't have an ordinance for.
We don't have a salary ordinance. We never did pass a salary because it was only part-time.
Okay, so then, so we can, so we can make an ordinance.
So that's why I was saying, we just need to have it for next month's meeting.
Yes.
So there's no reason to pass it right now.
But you can pass it right now, hiring, but the ordinance would have to, the salary ordinance would have to wait, but yes, you could.
I think that we.
Service, I think that it would.
Yeah, I think we, my issue there is that we said that we were gonna pass it.
Now, Jack, you do public hearings and stuff for the salary or something. You publish it. You're supposed to publish and have public hearing per salary.
We never have.
So. So. We could. We can pass an. Pass an ordinance, right, hiring Jordan Taylor as the full-time marshal of town of Greenville. At a rate of sixty-five thousand dollars per year. Prorated for the rest of twenty twenty-five.
I think that.
Right.
We advertised the budget and we appropriated the budget and he's telling me we didn't advertise.
Yeah.
The salary ordinance, so I think you would be fine to do that.
Yeah, and so then, so then for. Next month's meeting, we have the salary ordinance for twenty twenty-six for everyone, right? So that would be. So, and I I I know that we've never advertised any of the salary ordinances. Now, that's something that we need to start doing.
I'm gonna check and make sure it's the same.
Part of it's water utility though, right? So with that.
I thought we only discussed it. And then in the public meeting, the public hearing is when we passed everything, yes?
It's not public meeting is when we passed it.
Yes.
We didn't have a public hearing.
Yeah, we don't have a public.
We've never had a public hearing.
We just do.
We do it during a public meeting. We tell what salaries are gonna be, vote on them.
Same with bonuses, right?
Yes.
So.
We've been doing it wrong, we've been doing it wrong all the time I've been here.
So, but we're good to move forward with what I just said for the rest of the year, right? So. All right, I make a motion to hire Jordan Taylor as the full-time marshal for the town of Greenville. At a rate of sixty-five thousand dollars per year. Uh, prorated for the rest of twenty twenty-five. Before anybody seconds it, to moment this occasion with all of the people from the town of Greenville in here. That this would be our first full-time marshal in the history of. The town of Greenville.
Actually, I think back in location.
Yeah, he was. So, all right.
Thank you.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I oppose. There you go. Congratulations.
Making history, man. Making history.
Oh, yeah, he bummed the wife out like, oh, like, she left and you missed this. So.
But that's, that marshal also had to do the spreading of the gravel in town.
Right.
That was in a salary, so you're lucky you don't have to spread gravel.
You haven't seen the ordinance yet.
No, uh, so. And and so then what we'll be doing then next month will be to do everybody's ordinance for twenty twenty.
Yeah.
All pay ordinances for next year, so, um, but. There we go.
Check and.
Yeah, all right, so.
Eighty hours a week.
But I think it's really important though for the November meeting that we have to have that updated S O P. Out and updated and passed and it takes, takes care of everything else. All right, uh, circle them back around to special projects, sorry Andy.
Oh, uh. Yeah, so, um. Uh, w- we have a meeting coming up this week, uh, so we'll be using the meeting room here, uh, not this week. It's the third week in this month. Usually we realize the meeting's coming the third week in the month and we push it off for a week, so it could be the fourth meeting in the month. Point is, uh, we're reviewing, one of the primary things on the agenda is the five oh one C three. Uh, we're gonna be looking at that and filing paperwork hopefully for that and uh, the historic marker, getting the text. Put together for that. That's it.
Awesome. All right, um, Heather, anything? Budget twenty twenty-six?
We have the budget ordinance, which is two thousand twenty-five T O twelve. And it's the amount for. Three hundred ten thousand six hundred dollars.
I think, but I make the motion to approve the twenty twenty-six budget. That is T O dash zero.
Yeah, that's second.
All in favor, say aye. I oppose.
Okay.
Need your signatures on that.
Yep.
Two copies there.
Anything else? Right, anybody have anything for town business? Make a motion to close town business. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I oppose.
There are the leaks and adjustments. Hmm, you know, why, so why is there two that float around to the same thing?
Yeah.
I have to keep one in.
One should stay with you and then they sound other.
You get the other one. Oh, with this? Yeah, one stays with me and one stays with you.
Got you.
And that goes in my official record.
I'm wondering, I'm passing one around and then I think I'm trying to leave it to you, but um, anyway.
I do every stake it passes around.
Yes, yeah, I did, I'm sorry. Um, yeah, we've just been doing, uh, we've done some hundred penny and heritage. Uh, we started our valve maintenance.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Why do we paint our hydrants yellow now?
I think it's just the preference and I've always been taught and trained that red hydrants are for private and. Yellow hydrants are for utility or utility owned is what I, what I've always been trained and told. Um.
We tried blue at one point and it blends in too much. It blends in too much with.
Just like red, cause red is. Red is. Right, right.
Well, it does stand out at night though, if it's bright yellow.
Yes.
Yeah. Lights hit a little bit better, so. Um, it's a valve maintenance has been going on. We've also been going through, um, pulling out old meters. That have been turned off for over a year or more. Uh, we've got a couple instances this year. Where the check valve on our side will leak water through and it'll go through the meter and then out onto the ground somewhere. So by pulling those and putting plugs in, we can stop potential leaks. We've started doing that and just removing the old. Uh, meters, getting rid of that potential. Um, then. Other thing we've been doing is just assessing what the system needs for twenty twenty-six and kind of looking at what next year looks like for us, so. Um, you know, our least water loss is fourteen percent. I think it's stayed the same. Um, I can kind of jump as a long water loss. I can jump to the K nine report. I just wanted you all.
Yeah, I wanna know. I wanna know.
I didn't wanna cut you out.
I think there's like twenty, you know, potential spots or areas that they, um. That the dog alerted on, so we are going to start going out in those areas. And taking our utility back, sucking down, trying to see where the water is, maybe where the smell is coming from. And then kind of get a list going and assess which ones are priority and which ones are low priority. Meaning if it has like a three or four gallon a minute leak, then we probably wanna get that scheduled with a contractor versus just like a little bitty. You know, quarter gallon a minute. Once we get that list, what I'll do is each one we fixed from the K nine report. I'll try to make like a separate spreadsheet and just jot down this one was this much, this was this much. Eventually we'll have a total and we can kind of figure out some savings versus what we paid. Uh, it's gonna take some time and it might be, you know, summer of next year, by the time we get through most of these, maybe, so.
So wasn't one of the, the, the big water loss this time, the known water loss? The two hundred twenty-six thousand gallons, wasn't that in his report?
Um, there was a, that's why I wanted to let you all know, there was a hydrant. Did fix a leak over on Harrison Street and those are maybe three or four gallons a minute. So that was some of it. We did confirm and fix two of those already. Um, and then we also have confirmed, I think, two others, so. Four out of the twenty-something have already been confirmed, so.
Yes.
So hopefully we can, you know, whittle down on our water loss by identifying the other issues. But, yeah, I was trying to get my report. I can't even find it on my mess of paper work. And see what it said. So the two hundred and sixty-five thousand gallons was over at John Peckel and that's what kind of brings me. To, so, you know, at the beginning of the year when I, we were fighting. Section of water line runs behind that address, we're still finding it and it's still leaking. So we turned it back on for like, you know, two or three week period and we pressure tested it again and it's still having issues and losing. Water. That's where that bigger number amount came from, was back there on that main and it's, there's another section shut off again. We've kind of got it narrowed down, but that's kind of getting ahead of myself. And that's where like the, the tie-in and just kind of getting your own. Blessing on moving forward with, you know, that project next year and just kind of redoing that tie-in and maybe getting rid of. A lot of feet of that main that could be leaking down into the creek and we don't even know where the main really is back there.
Is John Peckel the one that runs in front of Jackson Springs and all that, or is it the one that's behind?
John Peckel comes off of.
Old Vincennes.
Old Vincennes. And looks around back to Button Town.
When you go down.
Yeah.
Turn right by the, on the. Uh, is that old, uh, Eris Valina to go backwards, boy, since we're across from the fire station. You go right instead of going left, fully central, that stops on at the end of the range. You go right, that's just turns it into.
And then you take a left, soon you get to the next intersection, Old Vincennes goes on stream.
Yeah.
Yeah, yes, the K nine report was pretty nice to see and all the spots, so we are gonna work on that, get that taken care of. Uh, yeah, kind of going into John Peckel or materials needed. Just proposing and I wanna do, like I said, just eliminate a lot of main through the back of the easement, this is.
So what's the idea? What were, what are we eliminating?
So. So, this is current, so we're looking to eliminate all this main. And we're gonna do a new tie-in here, which would be like a secondary feed, which we have. So we're gonna do a new tie-in here and then tie it in here, so we'd eliminate all this. Back here, this is behind their, like, their garage, there's a little cemetery.
Oh, so this doesn't actually run here. It runs like this or something.
Yeah, it runs, and we don't really know. And it runs here and then it comes across Old Vincennes and up, and I wanna get rid of all that redundancy. And get rid of all this that's sitting on this. It's like a, like a rocky hillside and it's just. A lot of potential problems and we're still there on the fleet there, so.
So is this, uh, did you see this? Have you seen the terms of that easement?
Yeah, it's not in the format that I would want it, but it's fine technically.
Do you need that?
I can get with you on how to format that better. I can get with you on how to format that better, hold me, Tim.
I'm not that nitpicky, it's technically illegally correct, so.
Well, okay.
I mean, you know, center twelve point, you know, so.
So what's the cost?
Um, they would, I've already talked to the homeowner and they would just sign it over. And just let us do the work there and sign us to have an easement there.
Let's do it.
So, and then they would.
Can't be free.
Right, and they, they worked with us.
I think there's something in here about, uh.
They work with us a lot to.
Sknow.
Just be Blaze Dale.
But I didn't think I need building on, I'm just trying to bring it up to you all and see if we can just keep pursuing that and.
Yeah.
And do that as a project of next year, kind of do a new tie-in.
Yes.
Um, so.
This, this talking kind of along the same lines, did we ever get a, a cost for maybe acquiring some more land by the. The water tower potential site in Glean?
We were working on that and I have sent an email out to him, it's probably been three or four months now. I haven't heard anything back, I can try again, um, he never let me know. Um, like an actual price or what I want and I would say, you know, this gentleman's in real estate, so I'd say top dollar. But I think for us, we have to do an evaluation.
Yes.
Process to see what the land is physically worth and then that's what we have to pay, can't go crazy amount, so.
Yeah.
We have to do that process for that, but it's still in the works.
Okay, so, yeah, I'd like to get that, that piece wrapped up. My, my thought is, the, uh. I'll just, I'll just share this, but I don't think we should own the whole cost of a new water tank in Gleana. Because the reason for the new water tank is for future development and to, to build more property. And you know what I mean, like, we're buying up the mountain residents and houses that are connected to it now, but if the county wants to expand in that area.
But it's not really the county, these are Greenville Water Utility clients.
Not, not, not.
Anything that you're gonna build there will be our clients, our customers.
Not if we don't extend our infrastructure.
Yeah, they need to help, their future planning needs.
Infrastructure because of the land.
Right.
The demand causes you to upgrade, I could see it, I could see that.
I mean, it, it wouldn't be a, they're gonna pay for everything, but there should be some split there, that's my thought.
Yeah, yeah, and I'll, I'll try to reach back out and actually call instead of email, so. Um, but I guess what I'm asking tonight is, can we just go ahead and spend, you know, from now to the end of the year? Can I just go ahead and spend money on materials needed, um, for basically next year's projects? And I spend, you know, from now until December, you know, sixty five thousand two hundred twenty nine dollars and sixty four cents on. And meters, flush hydrants, fire hydrants, um, holding materials needed for the tie-in project.
How many meters? I thought we had meters.
We are actually, um, we have about fifteen meters left, which means we've installed almost two hundred meters this year. Um, so we, we need meters, um, to finish up the year with, um, but I'd like to buy a hundred, a hundred meters now.
Okay, hang on.
Hundred meters next year.
Hang on, so you currently have a profit according to Jack of fifty nine thousand dollars and change. For us to approve bonuses, you have to have a profit, that's by ordinance.
Yeah, but that's for the, for this month, that's not the annual.
Oh shit, really?
That's one month we made that money.
But do you have the annual, Jack?
Sure.
Um, this is what we show, but mine might be different on tax.
What you got? Oh, okay, well then I'm good. Wanted to ma, wanted to make sure you guys didn't own it.
There's the.
Did you hear?
Money coming in, money going out.
Catch all that?
So is this. Oh, that's month today.
Go for the year's year.
Dispersed year to date.
Some change.
Revenue year to date.
That's the difference right there between those two, year to date.
Where's the difference? I see the totals, I don't see the difference.
Well, you have to subtract it out.
You want me to subtract it, okay.
Yeah, we brought in a hundred and forty five thousand, we spent a hundred and twenty seven thousand.
Okay.
So, I mean, one million four. One million four hundred and fifty two thousand and we spent one million two hundred seventy two thousand.
Okay.
So we're basically talking about twenty seven, under twenty seven, two, two hundred seventy thousand dollars we made this year.
Okay. Putting Jack to seventy.
You won't always have a calculator in your pocket, so.
But with those materials, you know, I, I have the projects kind of listed out, we just have leaking, you know, flush hydrants, fire hydrants that I wanna replace. And then again, the, the main tie-in is the biggest one, you know, that I'd like to do next year. But going ahead and just buying the materials, have it ready for next year and then all we're looking at is just scheduling on merit to do the, just do the projects or the jobs. You know, these are, all these jobs I've looked at and Scott has helped me, you know, they need, you know, heavy traffic control. Just equipment we don't have, even if we've rented some stuff, so it would be a contractor thing.
What's the lead time on what the part?
Um, most of this stuff is in stock, there's a few things that.
Like that tie-in thing you're talking about, is that something that's gonna take time to get or no? So question.
For parts?
Yeah. So fifty nine thousand, is that for all of the, for all of the project or just?
My number from Jack's report.
He said sixty. That was just a profit for this month.
No, I'm just talking about, you wanted. Fifty five thousand, sorry.
Fifty five thousand two hundred twenty nine dollars and sixty four cents.
That, is that all the projects or just?
Cover all materials for, for the project, yes. And then of course with the contractor, we already budget two hundred and fifty thousand dollars roughly. So we just take all that money out of that for next year.
I mean, you can't go on any shopping trips next year.
No shopping trips.
Uh-huh.
Do we have anything scheduled for the, uh, water tower next year?
Nothing for the water tower next year.
Still looking at possibly building a building up there?
There's possibility, I think, and then we're looking at, again, the tank, which, when we get to that, I mean, that's gonna be. A whole different thing, that's gonna, well, probably state revolving funds and.
What do you mean, like cleaning the tank?
No, like when we build the tank in Glean.
Own Glean, yeah, yeah.
If the county, you know, there's still like.
Sure.
So that would be a whole thing, but just trying to get.
Well, our, our bond expires in twenty eight? Have to look at that report, I think it expires in twenty eight, which means.
It's coming up.
That'll be about.
Be about.
Eight thousand, seven thousand a month, they're coming back into us for revenue.
They're twenty eight or thirty.
What?
Till we have the bond again to.
Always part of plan. Did you have, did you already talk about that?
No, he's not, not there.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm good with it, do we need to vote on this?
Yeah.
Have a list?
First of all, material or?
Yeah. What, where's your sixty five?
We need.
Okay, alright, I got it.
I guess some things can go up next year and last year.
Another thing that this will help, that'll probably go five percent and then you already have it in stock, so, you know, I have to do is just. Schedule it and you can get it taken care of a lot quicker.
Okay, so I'd like to do, uh, sixty five, well, I'm just rounding up, I'm gonna do sixty six. Sixty, approve sixty six thousand for water utility expense, hundred meters, four flush hydrants, three fire hydrants. The John Peckell tie-in material and other parts is needed.
Hey, you made a motion, I second. All papers, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Awesome, thank you all. So, which doesn't, you know, it's something I've been thinking about, but this year, um, there's a quote that stands out to me and I. Keep it on my desk, but if you're worried about the cost of going for it, you should see the price of staying where you are. I really like that quote, so need to keep making improvements on the water, utility and updating aging infrastructure for sure, so.
It's a great day.
Great day.
Clean water. GPS on trucks, did you go there?
I think that was on there.
Yeah, I looked it on there, so, I mean. My opinion is that we leave the GPS on the trucks.
Yeah.
So. I don't know how we can, I don't know how we can adjust the, the GPS to go.
Who owns the equipment, what company are we going through?
I guess through like, um, and compared, we have like.
Horizon or?
Appeal cards with.
Wex.
Wex.
Get with them and see what we can do.
Well. No, I mean, what I'm saying is, like, right now, right now, like, the cap is like at seventy miles an hour, it. Alarms or whatever, right? I don't know how we can take that to like seventy five, I mean. Or if you're taking off, I mean.
Are there any, there's no speed limits that are over seventy?
Right, so I don't know how we can go to like.
And in towns.
There's no speed limit's over fifty five to twenty year one.
Or sixty five and.
There's sixty five, one, two sixty.
Going to court and that stuff, but.
There's seventy going to court.
Yeah.
Once you hit Georgetown, it's seventy after Georgetown.
Yeah, I'm good with it, I mean, we're, we're good with that, and I get the purpose of it, yes. So, so it's all good.
Alright, moving forward.
Um. That was it for the water.
Awesome.
Um, okay, first order. Um, we are not, you know, we're, we thought we were, we had some rain days and then they've had some emergencies, but. Airmod wasn't able to get out here to do, they're gonna be here for three days and they weren't able to get out here till next week. From the twenty first to the twenty third, um, but as far as the project goes, we are about eighty five percent. Complete, they have all their conduit ran, I think there's wires running through it. Um, so they're really close on, um, you know, having everything set up and ready to do. Um, test next week and do soft starts and kind of bring over new equipment and phase out the old. Um, so that's where we're at, we're just a little behind what was anticipated, but.
The structure is fully done, it's just the PLC at this point and.
Yeah, sorry, just finished up in, you know, wiring and like I said, getting Airmod out here to. Uh, do their, you know, I think they'll inspect and like I said, they'll hook with some startups and just, you know, double check some stuff, make sure we're good. So, by next, within the next week, we could have at least one of the new, you know, blowers on and then the PLC up. And we might just phase in that second one, you know, after the fact, but we'll have one up and running. So, everything's looking good, even the air conditioning is roughly installed over there. Um, so the contractor had it run, uh, wiring outside for them to hook up to it. Um, I don't think they've gotten the wire fully ran out there, so there's no AC or anything, but. Again, that can be kind of finished work on the project.
What did we do on, did we do mini splits on that or?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a mini split.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I think it's like a little, I think they call like a half, a half ton unit.
Yeah.
It's pretty small, it would be really good for that size building. Um. Now, I think that all I had for the, they were planning to just update on that.
So.
So.
So, just kind of a recap for coming up here, uh, we, we're. Forward here, uh, we've got the twenty first, we've got an executive session at six P M. We're gonna discuss legal issue.
Oh, it's performance.
As well as performance. And then, uh, next month, we've got several things, so we've got, uh. Uh, salary ordinances for both water utility and for the marshal department, we have bonuses. Um, so SOP, kind of a recap of what we need.
I was gonna send out.
Yes.
Probably next, next week's evaluations, recommendations.
Yep, I think that would be. I think that would be great, so.
And we're gonna be public hearing.
Yes, we gotta have the public, yeah, public hearings, we need to get that, uh, next month, we need to get the, um. The ordinance for road cut permits, we need to get that posted and, um. So, question. I don't, well, we don't know how long the executive session is gonna take, well, we can schedule a public, we could schedule a special meeting. If the, the, to talk further about mainstream, uh, based off of what feedback is.
Yeah, I mean, we can schedule, if you wanna do a special meeting notice for seven. That night, and I can't imagine we'd have more than an hour remaining, but as long as it's as soon as, and you could even schedule it for six thirty, six forty five, as long as it's soon as practical afterwards.
Uh, I, I think.
And we're finishing up, or we could do it another day.
Well, I think we would, I would rather do it, I would rather do it another day, I mean, we don't know yet. What negotiations need to happen, so between now and then, so, actually, I mean, we're.
Well, I have a, I have a meeting tomorrow in another municipality where I use a bond counsel. Uh, with a big Indianapolis firm, um, but I might just ask them to, if they have an attorney on their firm that. Um, deals with I U R C matters that I could talk to, although before we get to an executive.
Yeah, I think that would be, I think that would be great, I mean, I, I do, you know, we, we have never. You know, we wanna do what I don't, for our constituents, but we, we also wanna be conscious about the dollars, but, you know, I think.
Well, I'll email, I'll, I'll email mainstream in first thing in the morning too and just say, is there a possibility of changing?
Yeah.
The exhibit.
Yeah, I mean, we have some exhibit.
What we've asked you to do, not Heritage Springs, which doesn't seem to fall under.
We, we have.
Terms.
We have exhibits, we.
I don't have.
Questions, we have suggestion or changes that we requested to their agreement, so, I mean, there's not anything to grant. Authority to, there's nothing to approve part of the. Negotiation phase right at this point, so. But, alright. Make a motion to close meeting.
Second.
All papers, aye?
Aye.
By opposed?